I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All right. First order of business is the previous minutes from the previous meeting.
I read them over. I didn't see anything. Make motion to approve.
Second.
Les, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Proving the claim, signing the bills. Concerns there for anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Les. Thank you. They're all in favor? Aye. Pose. Planning and zoning, blue guy, nothing, rippers. Trump time, we're ready for the manager's report then.
Skate park works progressing very well with concrete. The sidewalk concrete is all poured. They're working on the final curving around the parking lot. Today I talked to them. They said the next two items they have to do, they didn't know which order they were going to do them was the file upgrade for the parking lot, gravel, and then the fencing. The fencing contractor is going to come in and do the fencing along the creek. So that's going very well. They do have some curves. They'll probably pour them tomorrow right at the entrance where the storm drains are. Number two, the parking zone markers, they did not get up. They'll be up this week. I know they're in. Kenny and I talked about it. I'm going to medium up here showing what NDOT recommended we do. They want them set back off the white line eighteen inches. So maybe the parking, the marking post will be up there to no parking zone if by September crosswalk later this week.
Inside the white line now? Like curb side of the white line?
Yes, about eighteen inches away from traffic. Dora, I know Mr. Bird is not here. My question was, what steps do we need to do to add the new fiscal restaurant to the Dora ordinance?
Answered that. The female, you didn't get it.
I guess I didn't see it.
He said all we had to do was just add it to it, and that would become reoccurring council.
So we don't have to redo the ordinance?
Yeah, to redo and add that restaurant to it, but then resubmit, but it's not a great deal, so it's not a lot.
Okay. I was asked, so I wanted to present that to the council. Will we do that then for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. The old sewer plant, the lift came in on eight twenty-six. The guys have been pressure washing it. They begin that day. The washing's done. They've been working on stucco. A lot of stucco damage is there. The paint blew off, and a lot of stucco is damaged, and they're doing it themselves. When they get the stucco done, they'll repaint it. He thinks maybe they'll have it to lift for two weeks. So work is progressing well there. This here is just for your information, item number five. The plant has nine flow meters. The old sewer plant has nine flow meters. Three of them work. I'm getting estimates to bring these back online, one or two at a time. There's ten chalk recorders that go with the flow meters, and only three of those work. We need to get at least four of those going, the meters and chart recorders. This is not something new. It's happened over a long period of time. We're trying to make the old treatment plant more efficient, and we need these meters online to measure things such as sludge, which we don't have a good measurement on. So I'll be getting with you on those later, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Get Ron to add those to the PM schedule. That way they'll be checking them off every month of whenever their schedule's like. That way we don't get to go work. We got it. We can get it rather than wait how much.
Yes, sir. When they're all available.
The cherry holders are the ones.
Yes. Yeah. And that's like nineteen seventy technology. They can all be replaced with one digital unit, and that's probably the way I would lean. Also, at, well, actually both tanks, the phosphorus tanks, Ron asked me to bring this up. The chemical we use crystallizes about every three months or so, and the tanks have to be cleaned out by hand. In the future, this is something Ron thinks we need to look at changing. A different tank, a style of tank can be used, and Ron says they can change it out themselves. But these chemicals, I was down there one day, and the chemical had sixteen inches crystallized in the bottom of the tank. I've got a picture of it. And they take garden hoses and a pump and wash that out into totes, and then they use water to re- get it back in solution. And then they drop that in a little bit at a time. It's not very efficient. Takes a lot of time away from them. So it's nothing we need to do right now, but it is something Ron wanted me to bring to your attention. Staying on the wastewater, I've interviewed and offered a job to Ryan Grunden. He's a class three operator that lives in Eckertie. He's got several experience with the city of Honeyburg. I said in your manager's report, I hope to have an answer today. He actually accepted the job this morning. So he plans on starting here September fifteenth, which is a Monday, and he will ultimately be Ron's replacement when Ron retires. Ron says he's either going to retire at the end of the year or the first half of next year. He hasn't made his mind up yet. I'm trying to get him to stay a little longer to help bring this guy on. Ryan has worked at the same kind of plant we have down here, the oxidation ditch at the city of Honeyburg. So he's very familiar with it. He just needs to get his feet on the ground and find out the particulars. So I hope to introduce you soon to Ryan Grunden. The CIPP issue, the root issue we had on College Avenue has been taken care of by our own maintenance department. They dug it up and replaced the sixteen-foot section of eight-inch pipe that has blocked the tree roots. Temple and Temple has all the liners ordered, and they'll be back in about two weeks to start lining the sewer mains. One twenty-eight South Highway three thirty-seven, we talked about that before. Chief Ketterman has not yet contacted the homeowner there. Pressure washing, the east-west and glydis tanks are done and went well. The south tank had some paint peeling off the lower three rings. That's about thirty feet. This also happened the last time we painted the tank in twenty, or we pressure washed the tank in twenty twenty-two. At that time, those three rings were overcoated, and that layer is now coming loose again. And that's why if you look at the tank, there are actually two different colors. The bottom is a little lighter shade of green than the top. So I had Midwestern Engineers look at that. They had Tenebri paint come and look at it. That's the manufacturer of the paint. I got the recommendations this morning. So what, what we recommend, Stacy and I both recommend is right now we just wait. We don't proceed with the repainting the lower ring. That tank needs to be painted probably in four or five years, and we don't want to waste money now doing those three rings again. The paint that was coming off was just little flecks, and unless you walk up and look at the tank from the road, you can't even tell. Right now, we're recommending just waiting, and then probably four or five years, it'll be time to take that tank completely off and repaint it inside and out. Current construction was the low bidder, and I talked to them, and they gave us a credit of forty-two hundred and fifty dollars because they did not pressure wash the top portion of the tank. And I actually got that bill today, and I put it in your, your track. Any questions there on the tanks? Vandalism, the farmer's market in Rice Island bathrooms were vandalized during the day on the I put nine twenty-three, that should be eight twenty-three. Kenny's cleaned up and partially painted over the graffiti. I've got some pictures of them. They will need to be fully repainted inside, and Kenny will take care of that. Last, I talked to Chief Ketterman. They were still reviewing the video, trying to find out if they could figure out who was doing it. I haven't heard anything recent on that. Speaking of the police, they complained about the air conditioning unit upstairs. So Cobb Heating and Cooling came in to look at the upstairs heating and cooling, and that's cooled by a big rooftop unit up on top of the building. And half of it has failed, so they switched it over. There's two compressors in it, two completely separate units. They switched everything over to the one unit that's working. It's good enough for now. Cobb says it's just a matter of time before the other side fails too, and they're getting us a quote, and we may want to put that in the budget.
Is that on hopeless?
Yes. The rest of the town hall was switched over to individual units, but the upstairs was left on that old rooftop unit. Yes, sir. If you're following there, sorry. Elm Street and Walnut Street sidewalk, that corner. Three companies returned quotes to me, and one declined, Kevin Spalkerson. The quotes received are CNR Construction, fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Temple and Temple, eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Riley Excavation, forty-nine thousand two hundred. I would ask that you approve CNR Construction to proceed with ADA sidewalk completion there at the corner of Court House, Elm and East Walnut.
I'll make the motion to have CNR Construction do the work at the lowest bid.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Pose.
Cross connection letter, oh, I'm sorry, Elm Street trash. We continue to have trash issues with tenants there between this is the building over here, I don't know what you call it, but between North Capitol where eighteen sixteen is the new new restaurant and on down to Elm Street, that building, we have trash issues there. There's nowhere good for a dumpster to be. And I've got a picture with the opening of Fistful. They had a whole lot of deliveries and a lot of cardboard piled up there over the weekend. Unfortunately, the workers threw the cardboard on top of the toters, and the toters weren't full. So they blocked the toters, and then the, all that overflowed out onto the sidewalk area. I've got a picture. It looked horrible. We took care of that first thing this morning, and we've talked to the owner of Fistful. He thinks he's got it resolved. We may have to expand that area there in the future. Just letting you know that we're doing our best to resolve that.
They just broke the boxes down to help.
Some of the boxes weren't broken down. None of them were put in the toters. They laid them on top of the toters. Then they couldn't get trash in the toters. And other people laid the trash out. It got out of hand very quickly. A three-day weekend. Three-day weekend, brand-new restaurant with a lot of deliveries. It got out of hand. I know Mr. Bird's not here, but I'm asking your permission to have Mr. Bird draft a letter to the Whistle Express Car Wash about their backflow device being out of certification date. They've been unresponsive. I had issues with them last year being responsive. So I'd like to send a certified letter to the owner of Whistle Express and then hand-deliver one to the actual manager out here. By law, they have to have backflow device on your domestic water because of the chemicals they use in the car wash. It has to be inspected every year. It's one of almost two hundred I deal with.
I give you a little assistance with that if they can't shut it down. It doesn't happen.
Well, we can, we can shut the water off. We don't want that to happen. So I'm asking your permission to have Mr. Bird send a letter to Whistle Express.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Pose.
Last, the update on the letters. One nineteen Capitol Boulevard, no change there. Mr. Bird reached out to Sean Davis. He looked at it, said the job's too big for them. Grass weeds, it's really kind of gotten out of hand. I don't know what you want to do there. It was an elderly couple. I talked to him on the phone. I told you two weeks ago. The gentleman's been in and out of hospital with some issues and just don't know what to do there. Eight twenty-nine Capitol Boulevard, the car is still in the yard. One twelve Beaver Street, I didn't look this afternoon, but they did spray Roundup, kill the Johnson grass, but the equipment. The equipment is still there. And then three fourteen West Poplar Street, they did mow the grass.
I did talk to Don Blank, who's a property owner on that one on eight twenty-nine Capitol Boulevard. And he told me that the car is owned by someone who lives in Massachusetts, and they can't, I don't know if they can't get a hold of her. I don't know if she's in relation to people that live there or what it is, but I guess we're just, you know, he was asking, if one person calls in to complain, do we act on it? I guess we do. And so I've got to report, I'm going to report back to him tomorrow, and I still don't have to remove. I don't know if he can, can he, I wish Chris would say, I guess I should have called him. Can he legally remove that car from the property that he owns? He owns the property.
He owns the property. There's renters there, and the female that lives there, it's her car.
Oh, it's her car.
It's what he told me, but somebody co-signed for it. It was a family member in Massachusetts.
And he said there is a money issue that it's not made. Name's on the car, and the name's on the car. So it's a very tricky situation. I don't know. I guess we'll have to confer with Chris tomorrow. Okay. I just want to let you know that I did reach out to him and talk to him for about half an hour.
The pictures I have, this is such an escape park. This is some of the sidewalk they were doing. That's curving around the parking lot. Again, fresh concrete pour there on the sidewalk. Cutting the expansion joints in the concrete. That's an overhead picture I took today. So you can see the parking lot area is where the pickup truck and the mini excavator, the skid steer setting is clearly outlined now. The only work left to do is the curving out, and you can see they've got a foreign part of it. They're working on it over here. Once that concrete pour is done, then basically the parking lot area is finished, and they'll be ready to grade it and black pop it. So CNR is close to wrapping up there, the work that they can do until Hunger Skate Park moves in later this summer. While I was there, I took a quick video going forward.
Your service still on track to get it done this year, hopefully?
It depends on Hunger.
Right. I know with the delay we had on the licensing.
We're fine on the site work, which is what CNR was doing. Hunger's building four skate parks this year, and ours is the fourth. So they said as soon as they got done, they would be here. They think it will be mid-October was the last I heard.
Up on the east end of that, is that, that'd be grass, or what we don't?
Yes. There wasn't enough room there to make it parking.
Right. Remember that.
So moving on here, this is Landmark Apartments. They've started phase two out there. This is behind Dunkin' Donuts. They're a hundred percent building one more twenty-unit building now. They're going to do the foundation for a second building. There's room there for three. If you remember, that was supposed to be ninety units. Yeah. And they built, they built thirty, and they've got room for sixty more.
He intends to do that.
Yes. This is some of the graffiti that happened in the bathroom. I left some of the most colorful things out of the pictures. There were some very colorful things. And this one with the baby changing table says, save the children.
Hope they get them.
This is the tank pressure washing. You can see how bad it is compared to what they were pressure washing versus what isn't done yet there. What they did looks very good. This is how they've done the top to bottom. They rigged the tank just like they would if they were sandblasting or painting. This is the one up on the hill, Loth Avenue, the south tank. You can see the two different colors, and that's from repainting it in twenty twenty-two. And you really can't tell as much you walk up on it that any paint come loose. This is our maintenance crew working on the sewer main up there on College Avenue at East Walnut. Sixteen feet of pipe went in there to take care of the roots that was in the line. This is Ben and Elvis. They were changing the fire hydrant out on the Summit Springs, which is north of the interstate. We all call it Penimanville, but Summit Springs is the right name. That was kind of a difficult spot because of how close it is to the sidewalk and the driveway there. This is now the old plant. This is some of the flow meter issues. The electronics is completely gone for that meter. That's the meter. It's failed. That's the electronics from another meter. It's gone. Ten chart recorders there, and we think we can replace all of those with one unit. Electronics? Yep. Electronics kind of neat. You push a button and change between the inputs, and you can also put a thumb drive in it, Mr. Fisher, and download it to take it to a computer and look at them. I think that's the way to go. This is the pressure washing there at the old sewer plant office. You see how much was flowing off. Right there, you can see the stucco. You can see the fiberglass underneath. That much stucco was coming off. These guys were applying stucco. You can see up here, they completely repaired that run. They patched the top run. And there was a man on the ground doing the other run. Now, I don't know if you noticed, but yes, they were both were wearing safety harnesses in the lift. This is the chemical tank. That's what was inside of it. That's crystallization sixteen inches deep. Ron says that happens about every three months, so that's something we probably should address.
You just have to dip that out, I guess.
You have to dissolve it, is that right?
They pump, they pump it out into a tote and then dissolve it and mix it. They can't put it back in the tank because it'll do that right away. They use one tote that they agitate each tote, and then they feed each tote mainly. This is something else they done at the old sewer plant. They took that old cardboard across the street. I approved them doing that, and Ron built these concrete pillars and raised it up, and they could keep two vehicles now underneath that old cardboard inside the fence. And they did that on their own. This is the bus maintenance facility out behind Corden High School. It's been about a month since I showed you a picture of that. And the last time, it was just gray, and now the building's well up. The painting on the library, I'm sure you all saw that. This was the trash issue that we've been talking about over there on Elm Street. So much of that is just cardboard boxes. You can see they weren't broken down. Over here, you can see the boxes laying on top, the other dumpsters. They were blocked.
They were probably overconfused what to do with it.
We were, we're trying to work through that issue there, if everyone will bear with us.
It's like we need to extend that.
Kenny and I talked about extending it, yes. Kenny said once he got all the cardboard cleaned up, the dumpsters all fit inside the existing fence. But yes, we've talked about extending it. Any questions on any of that for me?
The letters from Chris at six oh four Best Avenue. That's a picture. That's a repeat.
Six oh four what?
I'm sorry, six oh four.
Six oh four Best Avenue.
That's a grass letter?
Yeah, grass letter. And on the street, Main Street over there, Mulberry, we have pumpkins thrown across the sidewalk. Now, during the Great State Farm, she's raising, she's raising the plants on the these ways. Complaining with people walking down the road, they have to walk to the pumpkin vines, so they'd like to have that taken care of. Might look at that first for a bit of coat tag or two. I didn't have time today.
Okay, sir. Anything else?
Yes, sir. I'm good.
Any other questions?
I just want to know what you have to do.
Thirty-seven pictures.
Hellstorm building damage, is that, is that you or?
Both of us, yes.
Sent an email to all of you all who are actively working on the Seaver Building. I just need to know that whoever gets the bidding process, you all are going to do this, and try to suggest just want to be involved, and they want to see the adjustments they fit. I guess to make sure that they're bidding everything correctly or whatever. I have nothing to say about what they're wanting to do.
My, my question to the council is, do you want to repair every building that was damaged, only certain ones, and how do you want me to bid it? Because for that dollar amount, it's got to be bid.
Sure. This, and we're only, we've got a ten thousand dollar deductible that goes for all the buildings, right? Sure. This, and we're only, we've got a ten thousand dollar deductible that goes for all the buildings, right?
Yes.
It's a one-time, so we're just.
Now's the time to fix it.
Right, absolutely.
I think five hundred thousand?
Close to.
Four ninety-seven, I think, was the number.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Seven, five.
Yeah, there's almost five hundred thousand dollars. We would only pay two thousand.
The question is, do we do it as one big project or part, part it out a little bit, right?
I'm, I'm asking you, how do you want me to do it?
If we don't break it up and you're limiting, who would bite out that kind of bullet?
Right.
As far as contractors though?
I mean, you could always have someone come in and pick five, six of them.
If you break it down, then you just have to chase all the people.
It was three.
Yeah, there was only three at all, twenty-three, seven, twenty-three, twenty-four.
I think that's going to look at it and divide that somehow. I, I just don't know that too many contractors are going to.
Probably bring it down maybe so many properties and so on.
That's what I was thinking. Break it down and look at proximity and say, this roofing is being bid and this is.
See what makes, I guess, yeah. Shrink it up. I, I don't know. Fifteen individual locations makes sense, but. Or fourteen thirteen or whatever, more, yeah.
I should say we table that, get an idea of what we're looking at happening and then how we're going to break it down.
It's a possibility that you have somebody just look at it and give us an estimate for it.
It has to be.
Yeah, fit it.
It has to be.
Well, then, fit it, okay.
Well, to break it down, you can still have, I mean, construction company A could say, you know what, we'll take it all and we'll do it all for X.
That's the one I'm wondering.
Or, or you can have, you know, three companies take a chunk each and, you know, we just, I guess we just kind of, we'd need to look at what the, what, how.
We have to lay the bid out and have, that have that option if they have three or all five over.
We could do one bid with like three or four alternates. These buildings, these buildings, and then they could bid on all of it if they want.
We can break it down. We just need to kind of lay out, see what's together.
That's my idea.
Might give our smaller contractor a little more chance to.
Change something.
I mean, then insurance report tells you exactly what was wrong with every single building. They break it down. So if you all was to read that report, it would tell you specific buildings, what was wrong and then you all could decide how you wanted it to be bitted out. And or what buildings to put together considering like, okay, building A only gets this, this, and this done. This, so does building Z. They only need this, that, so put them two together or whatever. People kind of.
Hydro damage might make sense to you.
Would the insurance company have a problem with more and more? You know, no, they just want to be involved in the bidding process and what is being bid.
Let's table it and develop some sort of document.
I'll come back next day with a better plan. I want to hear your feedback first.
Makes sense.
I'm writing down better plan.
You know, all siding on six locations, maybe you did it as a side job or whatever.
Windows are one, windows is another.
I would put a report, but I didn't lay it out and do anything like that.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, Larry Schickles, Halloween.
Hello, Larry Schickles. Here's the United Parks Department. Getting to be that time again, so. Halloween, obviously we have, uh, this is the ninety-first annual Halloween parade. Uh, one of the things that we're asking to do this year, which is a little bit different, is the prosecutor's office has asked to get involved with the Halloween parade. And so one of the things that they would like to do is we have the Halloween parade costume contest planned. Um, we were putting speakers down Chestnut Street this year to kind of bring back what we did during the bicentennial, but one of the new things that we would like to do is hold earlier that day from noon until the parade, a Halloween street party, which is geared around public safety booths and food booths. And so Otto is going to be here and, and like me, he has about three, you know, there's three or four things going on tonight, so we're all kind of sharing things up, but the request is that what we would like to do is close Chestnut Street from Capitol to, is that Mulberry at the? Yeah, to Mulberry from noon until six. The stage, which will be very similar to the stage they use for the Popcorn Festival, would set kind of offset on that little piece of Elm, which you couldn't get to anyway if Chestnut was closed. Um, they would have food trucks over in the, the area near the bicentennial. There would be public safety organizations have different kinds of information booths for kids. Um, out in the street, we would have music from noon through and then I think at three o'clock, that Lana Scott, who's from Nashville, will perform until five thirty, till just before the parade. And then the parade will be announced from that stage. And so we're asking, we asked for the parade route. We're just asking to extend that to be able to close Chestnut Street from noon until after the parade, so it will live from Mulberry to Chestnut Street or to Capitol Avenue.
That's on the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Over there.
Yeah. Yep.
What, what's your date?
I don't know.
October twenty-fifth.
I'm with it, so I can make that one. The street closure for Chestnut from North Capitol to Mulberry and then the end of Elm, which is the dead end that goes into, because that'll be the stage where you sit. So that would be closed off at the same time.
Four to six, where?
Noon to six.
Noon to six, thank you.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Posed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Bruce, I'll be out. I'm going to go to South horses. For sure anyhow.
I forgot to ask them, did they apply for the holder?
Yes.
Should be up there. Good point, I know.
All right, next on the agenda.
It's not something we do.
Right. Rick, label.
Just one thing about insurance, you know, as far as the, uh, my insurance, it's over there, but you got to get a little bit of time and patience on the insurance claims as well, so. That may depend on how many contractors. Uh, thank you all for allowing me to come back again. I'm a few events here. I think this year, trying to get a three-way stop sign at Summit and Maple. At that point, uh, that station, she was six years old, was going to school at St. Joseph's, tried to walk down the hill to get to St. Joseph's. This year, mom started her at Corden Elementary. So now she's kind of walk up the hill, cross, uh, Maple or Summit there because it's both streets. It's stand and wait for the bus to get there in front of Secret Court Cemetery. Uh, assuming it will be dark when she's going up there, uh, she has to be at the bus at seven AM. And, uh, I was asking for a three-way stop sign back then. At this point, uh, what I would, there's a stop sign coming up Summit, but nothing coming up Maple or coming down Summit. And I would really like a stop sign there on Summit, uh, just a little bit for the cemetery, uh, entrance and exit there. Uh, one concern. Maple, yeah, thank you. One of the concerns was, uh, a semi would almost be back into the intersection. So I looked online, looks like an average semi is about seventy-two feet long. I've been up in the desert from where I think the stop signs should go. It looks like there's eighty-five feet. So it would not quite be back into the intersection. I don't know, Bruce, some of the people I've been calling told me they were going to give you, try to meet, look at some options. I called Brad Ford, the school transportation and told him, you know, understand, if you find not a better place, that's Steve you.
I haven't heard, never really tell you.
Uh, but you spoke to him, didn't you, Rick?
I spoke to him. I told him what the issue was. He said he was going to try to get over Bruce to meet him over there and see if there was some other option. Uh, he said, um, he didn't think it would be a good option to stop going down Summit Hill. And if they had to take the bus, go down and try to find somewhere to turn around to come back up to try to let her get on coming up the hill. That, you know, that was by a time difficulties as far as maintaining their route schedules.
Can you point where everybody knows?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Where does she have to stand?
She has to stand in the.
Right, right here where Cedar Hills.
No, that's not true.
That's a plain joke. Go to your left, Rick. Like, can we see that round circle? That's the, see real thin here.
Right, this one here. Got you.
So she has to stand and see her go?
Yeah, so she, she lives here. There's no sidewalks near the side of the street. I brought this up last time. Somebody said I was inaccurate. As far as I know, it's the only street in downtown Corden, certainly in the historic district, that has zero sidewalks on either side. So she has to walk up here. The neighbors got bushes, which is their light. So she has to walk in the road. She gets up here and she's got to cross over here and, and sooner it will be dark. And people just come around this corner extremely fast. This road here, the cemetery road is raised, it's like three or four feet. So when I go to visit them, I come up here, there's no stop sign here, but I always stop before I turn left. Because you don't see cars coming around this corner because that hill's, the cemetery road is high. And I can't tell you how many times I got ready to go and had to stop real fast or see them coming and speed up. It just, all the guys who know, they get you, but, you know, I talked to other neighbors, I, I, you know, I talked to the school transportation, I talked to the Corden Democrat, I talked to everybody. I can possibly, you know.
Where, where's the bus go through?
Bus comes down Maple Street going south. Gets to the entrance of Cedar Hill Cemetery, makes the left, then comes down to the stop sign and then on down to Elm.
Okay, so rather than going a little bit, if it wasn't to keep going straight, but that's, that's the part of the city doesn't.
He said he couldn't turn around. I don't know why they wouldn't want to turn around. So if he can go down Summit to the bottom of Summit, turn left and or right. If he turns left, he'll go right back to front of St. Joe where the others buses are and go on to the high school and be right on the road.
I think he's got, uh, other pickups for, he picks other kids up. I don't know if it's down Maple or wherever. I know she's telling the bus for another half an hour before she gets to school. So he's got all the pickups on that round.
I don't know what bus number that is. It's fifty-nine, fifty-nine, I'm sorry, you're correct. Bus fifty-nine comes down Mulberry. Why don't you talk? Yes, but you're here just as close to go to the corner of Mulberry, plus you're on much brighter area.
Still, still, no sidewalk.
But it's much brighter when you're right there at the school anyhow. I'm just wondering if it better on, and riding fifty-nine would not be the better option as to go staying in that corner. Just, I know that.
Once she's in the corner, she's extremely safe. It's getting there. And there's no, there's one stop sign added, just coming around that corner.
How many people, kid, children are standing in that Cedar Hill?
Right now, she's the only one. There's a neighbor across the street who owns this kid who's in kindergarten and they driving to the school.
So there's three houses there with children and I know that for a fact. So where are they?
They, they, the only other kid that I know are right across the street. They've got three kids. They're always in kindergarten and they driving to the school. And I, I, I don't know the justification for that. It's just because he's in kindergarten.
A lot of people drive it.
So I, I, you know.
They do very bad work.
Extremely scary safety issue. I mean, I, I'm scared to death every morning thinking of those something, you know.
Yeah, quite honestly, yeah, most have stopped there anyhow, like that curb.
They don't. I tell you what, they come around this corner. They come around this corner and then they cut inside the school. I mean, cars are going, they're racing. I called the police and asked them to put the brakes up somewhere. I think you mentioned it. You'd seen the cops up there pulling a lot of people over, but other people just kept driving by. I didn't show you here.
You was the one standing up there taking pictures this evening?
I was.
That blue pickup truck wasn't speeding, was it?
No, it was not. No, we can see. Good job. Help us, help the trucks. They're going into oncoming traffic just to make it around that turn. They're going from the far side. They're going over here. I'm the manager of the Catholic seven, carrying down. Across the street, just to see. Anyway, um, they've actually taken out the corner fence post on that, oh, over there before. So we've had to repair that. Well, just, just to cut the corner. It's, uh, and they do fly down. And now they've put the stop signs in front of my house, which is really great, but, um, at least it slows them down, makes them think a little bit. Yeah, it's, uh, they, they fly down that hill. Yeah, so, and it is a wide turn because you can't see from around the corner with the fence. So as they all of a sudden, if they're doing above the speed limit, which you weren't, then, then they're coming through really quick.
So you got, you guys see your, this road right, some of the dirt is about three feet up above. But what you're not understanding right here is you put a stop sign there and you've got a car or two sitting there and they're blocked by that bank of the entrance to the cemetery. They're going around that corner thirty-five, forty-five hour or where it ends, two, three cars. I'd much rather rear in another car than run over my grand.
But I'm sure.
Put a sign up, if you put a sign up that says, stop ahead, like they do everywhere else, they got them on, um, St. Stavro Road, where you can see, I'm there, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, stop ahead as you make your corner.
Right. Yeah, it's not going here. Then you have a sign everywhere and then they're, you know.
I've been, I've been over twenty-four years taking dogs off at their kids' cars. And I've never seen no rats whatsoever right there. In twenty-four years, there's no better rat right there in the desert. I'm not saying that it's good places for kids. To me, it looks like it makes sense walking down the hill from Capitol. Since at the school, I, I, I've gone to.
What was the, the true reason for not wanting to go straight down the hill on Summit and pick the child up in front of their house?
All he told me is he said, I will give it to Bruce and try to schedule a appointment to meet. And Bruce said he, he never got a phone call.
I called. You know, Mr. Spatter.
Brad DeBoer, who I talked to, he's the transportation person.
Touch base. I'd see if you can render local systems.
Yeah.
Connect the walls. He'll do that, Rick. Get him up there, see what we can come up with.
But I would definitely look into fifty-nine just because bus fifty-nine.
All I can do is follow the transportation here.
Right.
I've left, I've talked to him once and I've called more than three times. Let people give him a voice call, please be back.
And they got a superintendent and he's a tenant. I'll just lay that to you.
What number is that?
Bus fifty-nine, this one runs down Mulberry.
Fifty-eight.
I'm sorry.
I don't know that if we can.
Oh, boy.
Say, take the lower.
I do understand.
That's a safety, Bruce. That's dangerous pulling in and out there. Why, why, there's, it's actually a four-way because of that cemetery there. Why we think one stop sign coming up Maple is, is a secure, safe road condition is beyond me. I, I, I just, I just can't understand the hesitation for one stop sign. I just do not understand. I mean, it's, if somebody gets killed there, maybe y'all change your minds.
Well, child doesn't walk by herself, does she?
Of course not.
I would think so.
No, she doesn't. But you, so what? Now we have two people killed instead of a child?
Absolutely not. That's the reason we're trying to work this out.
Next on the agenda, three nine Beet Street.
Hey, that's me. Let me bring it up on the map to refresh Charles' memory before I go up.
Bruce, I forget it. I've been talking to, uh, a fellow at the high school before. If he's got an office up there, might just drive up there and talk to him.
Brad's at the.
Right, he's at the.
Yeah, I haven't been going.
I know. Yeah.
Jim, did they ever touch base with us about utilizing the cemetery for a bus stop?
You're welcome.
Did they ever touch base with us about using that front gate area as a bus stop?
I've never seen anybody in front of it. I thought they was right through the entrance of St. Joe. It's where I always see some parents or a couple, there were a couple of kids. I thought at first it pretty.
Okay.
I don't recall ever seeing kids at front gate.
Seven ten in the morning, three thirty in the afternoon. I was confused too. That's why I asked him to point out, out of court and wrong. Uh, many years ago, we, we had an issue with a gentleman that lived there at three oh nine, uh, Beet Street, and I'm, I'm circling it here. Uh, they built these duplexes out on Limit Street and cut his water and sewer lines. Y'all remember?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to keep names out of it because I think it's irrelevant to this conversation. They cut his water and sewer lines. It was legal. And, uh, anyway, he's contacted me and asked if he runs his water and sewer lines out. He's calling it an alley easement, the Beet Street. Will we reconnect it? Now, it's not an alley easement there.
Point out where he's at right now currently. Because that was one piece of property. I'm about to do the same part.
This is the property.
Yeah, and he's wanting to come to the left and go all the way down that.
Out through here, the Beet Street.
And he's got to cross two feet of property.
I agree.
He's calling it an easement. It may not actually be an easement, is what you're saying.
He's calling it an alley. It's not really an alley. It's the driveway to his property. It's also the driveway to this property, the driveway to this property.
Okay.
So the town can't give him permission to do that. So the town can't give him permission to do that.
It's not our easement, it's his easement.
It's somebody's easement, not ours.
Well, not wanting to do that, because if I remember correctly, there was the issue of dollars prior to that. That may not be the case now. And that's a long way if you're on a water line.
He says he has a plumber, and he's ready to do it. My question for you is, do we charge him the sewer tap and water tap? I don't think so. He had a sewer tap and water tap out here on Lemon Street. I don't think we need to charge him.
Someone else figured that out, Ben.
He had a water and sewer tap out here, and when they built these duplexes, they cut it. I'm not in favor of charging him, but I wanted you to clear that before.
As long as he gets the right away from the people owning the property and he faces the line, I think we ought to give up.
That's, that's the, that's the question I have for you.
So it was, was it on the wrong property at the time that it was cut? It shouldn't have been there? I, I guess I'm missing the point. It comes a lot before my time.
There were issues between the two property owners that we, we aren't involved with.
It was kind of a civil issue.
He told me he came to town hall, who was in charge, and told him to go ahead and cut it.
That's what he said.
Make the motion, Les.
I'll make the motion that we, we do the sewer tap, no charge. If he gets the line and gets all the proper paperwork up, we'll get it, get it hooked up.
But we have no legalities on telling him where to dig and how to dig it.
No, man, that's, he's got that.
Yes, I second that.
Got a second to move?
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Thank you.
We have a little supervision on that, Bruce. It's our folks.
Sure.
That's what digging up the road.
All right. We have one other person has addressed, it's Ben Avery.
Those who don't know, you've been Avery, live on North Capitol, just a few houses down from Lester. Also the assistant superintendent of maintenance department. Question, a couple questions, simple, should be simple enough. Will you pay me forty hours if I only work thirty-five? Or thirty? Thirty, thirty-five hours? Will you pay me a full check?
Ordinarily, no.
Ordinarily, no. Why not? Because I didn't work? Because I didn't work? I'm asking the board as a whole. I've heard two.
Right. Where, where are you going with this? I mean, that's pretty.
That was a simple yes or no question.
You get paid for what you work.
If you're an hourly employee, you get paid for what you work.
Okay, so why are we paying one employee and not the others to do that? I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, the board to tell me.
But you're, you're, you're kind of dancing around stuff here. What, what?
Yeah, you're right, I am. Dave Coburn, once again, the superintendent of the maintenance department, is not working his hours that he is getting paid to work. He is writing down forty hours or whatever. This also goes back to ghost employment. I have pictures that have been sent to me by people in this town, asking me why he is at his business during working hours in the company truck. This has been going on for over a year, and I'm done with it. I want something done.
Provide us the info?
I have provided the info, and I have a picture right here. This was taken August twenty-second. Can you identify that building? Do you know where that building is? You live here? You, Lester?
What time day is?
August twenty-second, one forty P. M.
I heard, just forget it.
Yep.
You don't see it?
I have my notes on my phone. August twenty-second, Dave left early, thirty minutes. August twenty-third, he left half a day, but wrote down all eight hours for the whole week, and you all paid him. And this has been going on every week. And I have questions every week, why this is being allowed. I'm not being allowed to do that, but if you're going to allow it, by God, I am. I'm gonna leave thirty minutes early. When he leaves, I'm leaving. We're all fed up with it, it's not just me. So I'm asking that something be done. This slap-on-the-wrist game that y'all are playing, this ghost employment stuff that you have signed this paper for, you're not doing nothing about it, and I want something done.
I understand, there's a different issue being up there whenever, I mean, whenever lunch, if he's taking lunch up there, that, that's a different, that's a different issue than.
He's not taking.
That's where they're filling out a time card as you're alleging fraudulent. You know, saying you're, saying work's till whatever.
You all put a security system up there, go back and look at the times. You have his payroll, you have his time sheets, you have the times that he's leaving on camera in his personal vehicle. There's been multiple reports of him being at his place of business. Last week, he tried to catch him, he was parked behind B. O. Brady's. The company, the town truck was parked behind B. O. Brady's, and he was over at Gulf Shores.
Same thing I brought, hold on here, about to go into.
Anyway, I had to check that by state policeman, he didn't come up there, but.
No, and neither did the town board, apparently, because it's still ongoing.
And there were pictures taken back there.
So my question is, you have twenty loyal employees that's been here twenty-plus years. You don't believe a word we say, but you believe the man that's come here two years and he's doing no wrong. I put all this on all three of you. I've never seen an I H R director, and I hate that this is all gonna blow up tonight, but I will make you know, before I leave here, me, you three are gonna get together on this. I want to buy, Lester, you didn't even come to me and say, "Well, Jim, we know they decided there's nothing going on this time." You all three hit for me, it's the way I felt. You ignored me, shut it down to the road.
Todd Price here called me and suggested we head to state police, Detective Jack.
I was at such a big deal with the state police and auto shop, then somebody in Indianapolis somewhere, with their attorneys, a phone call was made, and I'm not gonna say no name, but it was hush, hush, get it down the road. We don't own person, name or public. That's what I think it's all about. But the thing is, I don't care who it is. One of yous three, I've been, Carl and Kenny and all of them will tell you, but I don't think we gonna help with this. They ain't gonna tell you our word, we've been a name employer here all, Kenny, thirty-something years, and you don't believe them, like I said? Lester, he had you up there and seen you. Oh, you, is that a pretty juicy?
I remember talking.
They made you, they didn't even bring the neck, y'all, it's like you did only half hour. That was not.
You all get like fifteen minutes, right?
We get two fifteens and a thirty. For lunch? We get a thirty minute for lunch and then two fifteens.
Next time we get time clocks, I don't know.
Well, that's a sorry fucking excuse.
All right, you know.
Let me ask you something else.
That, that is.
This family name, you're coming with me, and he come on camera, accused himself, he come up to me and he goes, "You know, you don't know why you did no better than this." And I said, "Yes, I did." And he goes, "What? Some of the stuff I've seen left on Mr. Trump, I think he's still..." His exact words was, "I can't come on the scene and punish him for what he did before I got here." I'll go along with it. But the day he got out today, it's still going on, and he turns his hand, and I know a lot more about this shit you three think I did. And it ain't over with before I leave here.
The fact, the fact.
This is, watch one.
The fact of the matter is that anywhere you go, you lie on your time sheet, you're automatic out the door. That's everywhere I've ever been. I don't know why there's such a problem.
No, we, we can, absolutely, that's, that's something we, we need to look into.
Yeah, very quickly.
Understood, we, we, we will look into that.
So do you have, like, specific dates and information that we could use to see?
I have two dates in my phone right now, I just gave them to you.
Okay.
So, and then today, he was there three times, that I was told. I didn't see him, I was told and told.
Cognizant of that, Bruce.
I have no knowledge of that.
And you signed his time sheets?
I don't, I'm sorry, everybody's.
You don't sign.
He, he, a one time he has signed for the day's time sheets when Dave is not, didn't he?
Dave, Dave tells me that Bruce signs time sheets every two weeks. He says he takes them straight down the, Bruce, Bruce signs off on them, and they go straight to you.
No, I didn't see it, Dave.
I don't see the time sheets.
Okay, well, that is what he told me, so I follow that.
Don't point your finger and be like them and attacking, because I don't see the time sheets.
I'm not pointing my finger and attacking you?
You did.
I'm stating that I have been told. So do not, come at me, do not come at me.
Can you share the dates, stop, stop, share the dates, why you're like this now?
August twenty-second, he left thirty minutes early. August twenty-third, left half day, wrote down all eight hours for the week. Now, you wanna check last week's time sheets? It'll be turned a minute at the end of the week on Monday morning. Just go back to that footage, that'll give you enough.
We will look into it.
And also, I have one more thing, too. Wednesday, last Wednesday, we fixed the sewer main on College Street. And we used our excavator, we used our shovels, we used all of our tools, and sewer, raw sewage. And Sunday, we had a main break in front of the high school, and guess what we used? We used our excavator, all of our tools, all of which we just washed off with the hose. I don't find that acceptable. I live in this town, I'm not drinking that water. I want something done about that, too.
What, what's the normal procedure on that, you know?
I don't know.
You know, Bruce, right?
I don't know anything about somebody other than being able to fix.
Seeing we have some sort of legal protocol, but I don't know anything about.
State law states that there are certain disinfections that are required to happen.
Any other issues?
I'd make them up, and then just get that.
Absolutely.
Second.
All right, now, what's that? Motion investigated the issue there. It's been. All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
We look at that protocol, Bruce, if we don't have one, we need to address that. They don't have the equipment to get it.
Any other issues we know, if not, all in the panel? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, I have one more. What on the trail going up Chestnut? We haven't heard anything from them, have we? Going up Chestnut Street, the trail?
Oh, we have a virtual meeting, they're third phase.
Oh, really?
Yep, they're turning in bills.
I haven't seen any, but they have done, I guess they're doing.
Well, still in the environmental and historic preservation phase.
Yes, yeah.
Down here. I think that the estimated groundbreaking is next fall.
Year from now?
Yes.
That'd be five years or so, real quick. Okay, so all that has to be done now, like, with the new sidewalk. Okay, I just ask, because I knew, I hadn't heard anything for a long time.
Back on.
Yeah. I know we're giving a lot of money so far, ain't we?
Yep.
Okay, solves it.
Commentary was when three bike trucks showed up, three different departments, they had not sufficient pressure. It's true.
I don't know.
I don't know. Do we pressure test those lines, Ben? See what count?
I don't pressure test them, I believe the fire department pressure tests.[1708.91]